Just put water.
A lot of caffeine.
Sometimes it's not.
Right.
Are we live?
We are.
All right, welcome everybody. This is the Select Board meeting of Monday, June 3rd. And we will open, as per usual, with a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Dave Hemmway, Chair of the Select Board.
Bob Carrick.
Marty Blake.
And per our usual, for the meeting rules and procedures, we started back at this, but we are following classroom rules since there aren't very many people. So just raise your hand and don't interrupt people and we'll get to you as soon as we can. Do we have any particular announcements?
I have a couple of small announcements. One is, Mary just told us that they have three dogs that haven't been registered. Normally, we have a great deal more. Mary and Stephanie have worked very hard to contact people and talk with people. And maybe these three have moved away, for all we know, because you can't get a hold of them. But it saves people if they register their dog for $7.50 rather than end up with a $50 fine and if it gets worse.
The cops. And then I think you still also have to pay the same.
And you still have to pay, you know.
Yeah, right.
It's just as easy to get it done.
So save $50 if you're.
There are three, anyway, three dogs out there that haven't been registered yet. The other announcement that I had, I had put a request out for proposals for the town hall project, which was the looking at the back stairs over here that need replacement, as well as the clapboards on the front that need to be inspected. I sent it out to local contractors first, but the time has passed. So now I'm meeting with a contractor next Thursday, and I hope to have another quote, find someone else that is willing to come out and give us a quote on it.
But you didn't get any quotes from the.
Did not get any from them, but they could be busy. It's a busy time of year. And so that's, the other issue is tonight, I'm going to ask the board to appoint members to the Hazard Mitigation Committee. We have seven people, I guess, to go on to that committee. And hopefully, they know they're going to be appointed.
Is anini mini myi mo?
You know, you know, it's a. Anyway, so.
They are announcing that motorcycles are here. And so make sure, especially with the good weather and people starting to do things like mow their yards, to keep your grass clippings not on the road. You don't want people crashing.
No, they won't.
Do we have further announcements?
Those are the only ones I have.
Hi, Chief. Any announcements from the board?
We're here.
All right. Any announcements from our chiefs or roads?
Nothing about you.
I'm good.
All right. So that moves us into our public hearing, which is for the Hopkinton-Webster transfer station fees and ordinance. Rather than going through a million and one things, I will state that we have had the ordinance and the fees up on the website for the details of that, including comparisons between the old and new fees. The changes to the ordinance, in essence, point to the new fee schedule instead of incorporating the fees directly into the ordinance itself to make it easier to find those fees and post, as well as remove the portions about septicage, since we no longer take that at the transfer station. So with that being said as the overview, and I can certainly go into numbers if people want them, let me open it first to the board. Do we have any further comments we want to make on that before listening to the public? Okay? So we will not be making a final decision on this here tonight. We are here to listen to the public feedback at this public hearing for that. And then Hopkinton will be doing the same thing next week at their meeting for Hopkinton residents. And then the weeks after, we will meet as a joint board to finalize everything and act on the decisions, make the decisions and act on them pursuant to what we have heard at our prospective hearings.
Dave, I just occurred to me that I can make copies off of fees for people here. I can run down and make some copies.
Has anybody not seen the fee changes and would like to?
Fees in reference to.
Transfer station.
As what you drop off there?
Yes.
That they already have listed out there.
Correct.
I'll take copies.
Okay, okay. So he'll.
I'll be right back.
Yeah, I just tried to pull it up on my phone and won't let me pull.
I mean, I can, I can cheat off, Dave.
I'll take one, two.
Okay, so he'll get a couple of physical copies. I guess then I will run through the basic fee change for you. This is on our website, so for public hearing, if you click on that, the fee schedule is there. Helps if I'm connected. And rather than just posting a fee schedule, come on, join, I put, given the town's a comparison. So it has the old, what was in the ordinance, as well as the new. And so the full set is there. The, and I'll just run down the list, and then hopefully he'll have the list copies up here so you can see them by the time that there's comment. So for the permit stickers in the ordinance in, from 2012, it was a dollar for a sticker. Now it would be five. For brush and stumps, it was set at $100 per ton. The suggestion was $10 per load, $20 per load for passenger and one-ton trucks. That doesn't actually account for larger, so there may be some adjustment to make that simpler for people. But that was what had been suggested by Hopkinton and adopted as the way to do it for now. Recycling metal has always been on there. It was zero, it remains zero because that's good for us, it gives us revenue. Construction debris, pre-sorted, went from 100 to 150. Source-separated wood went from 75 to 125. Shingles were not accepted in the ordinance and are 125. So the general for what we've done with all of these is to update them to account for the cost that it is to get rid of the material. And so it costs considerably more now than it did in 2012 for the transfer station to get rid of the material. So the fees are finally being updated to account for that. Refrigerant goods were 10, they're now 15. Tires for passenger cars remain at 10. For commercial trucks, went from 20 to 25. And larger equipment, we don't accept. There may be a way for that to be added in the future. The transfer station DPW director over there was looking into that, but for now, it is not accepted. Off-hour emergencies, which was mainly used for septicage, but occasionally by haulers, is for $60, and that remains the same. It's 60 plus the cost of whoever comes to manage, run the transfer station during that time of drop-off. Electronics for TV monitors remains the same for less than 25 inches. Goes from 15 to 20 for those greater than 25, and from 20 to 30 for console, like, projection tube TVs. Miscellaneous stuff, VCRs, DVDs, microwaves, was $2 in the ordinance, goes to 5. Computers, CPUs, goes from 2 to nothing, because we actually get a dollar each time that we turn one of those in. Fire extinguishers were not accepted before, but are accepted by the company that we deal with for other things that were not accepted, like propane tanks, which were not in the ordinance before. So we will have those on the fee schedule now to accept for $10. And then under 20 pounds, 20 pounds and under for propane tanks are $5, over would be 15. General waste tipping goes from 70 to 120. And all of these fees are the, not what the average person would see. So if you're going in with your trash and you're recycling, you go in there, you drop off your recycling, you drop your trash in the hopper, you're good, you still don't pay anything, that's what our tax money covers. These are the fees for any additional use or high usage amounts, and that's what these fees are designed to cover and to withstand. Now that people have those copies that requested them, do anybody want to say anything else? Okay? So we'll go ahead and open this for public comment at 6:43. Do we have public comment? Yes.
Okay, so the general waste, gone from 70 to 120, so that's, that's garbage.
Yep.
Okay. So in the past, if somebody went in there with a pickup truck or a one-ton and they had over, was it 300 pounds?
I think it might have been 400 if you're going where I think you're going, but keep going.
And then they had to pay that out of pocket. So if you didn't go to the dump for a few, for a few days, and you went, it was over that, you got to pay 120 bucks now instead of a ton versus the 70?
So yes, if you're doing, if you're doing waste tipping to a point that needs fees, you're not just doing your residential trash?
Well, no, it is residential trash, but it's just like, you know, I'm going to go, I'm going to step back a ways, because I've done some, some stuff, and I just want to ask some questions.
Yep.
Because I want to learn. Back a few years ago, there was a young man in town that, that he went around and picked up, oh, young Georgie Neville, took over his grandfather's dump business, so he, they went around and they picked up people's dump. And then, a lot of times, Georgie, the hottie scot, he'd pick up the late, the older people's trash and hardly charge them nothing. And then you get to the dump with a bunch, and then it was that tipping fee, and put the kid out, it put his grandfather and put him out of business because it's the way it worked. So I don't understand that, the tipping fee, even for the people that, the MT trash that picks up our dumpsters, as taxpayers, we've already paid to get rid of our dump. So if I keep my dump, put it in my one-ton, drive over to the dump, there's no tipping fee. But if I put it in a dumpster, and he comes to my house, he goes to Malo's house, he goes to Adam's house, and he has 20 dumpsters in town, and he has 120 pickup curbside service, them, them people, us as taxpayers, we've already paid that. So the way I'm looking at it is, we pay MT trash for the rental of the dumpster and the transport to get it to the dump, and he's paying, last year between Hopkinton and Webster, he gave them, he's paid them $70,000. And the taxpayers, we've already paid that. It's like across the street at the school. Their dump doesn't come to our dump because it's an out-of-town service. Norton, I called them today, Norton has 20 dumpsters, 12 customers in town, 12 dumpsters. And them 12 customers, that stuff doesn't see our dump, so the dump's not getting charged for that. In the way I see this, and, and, I'm asking for direction, but if Kirk from MT Trash, he's got 500 pickups and took Hopkinton, which isn't nothing to do with Webster, and 60 dumpsters in Hopkinton, he's got 20 dumpsters in Webster and 120 curb pickups a week. So you do away with him, you run him out of business because he can't afford to tip there anymore. The people, there's a, there's five, six, and then all the dumpsters, there's close to 800 more people you're going to have in and out of that dump in a week's time from both towns. And it is taxpayers, and I know who the big taxpayers are in Webster. And, and we've already paid our share, and now, and this has gone on for years, in years. And I would like to know, I, I look at it as double-dipping. So could somebody re, put me in the right direction so I'm not looking at it that way? Or, or whatever, because it's in black and white, and I've done a little homework. I almost, I almost see, if you have another 800 customers that Kirk, that MT Trash is picking up, you're going to have to hire another person over there to keep an eye on them, 800 a week. No, no, I'm trying to make sense of all this and keep Kirk in business, or whoever. Because if Kirk goes out of business, I might take over, and then we'll see what happens.
So, valid, fair, and good question.
I just want to.
The point that I, so the thing that I will point out here is that additional, an additional fee for general waste tipping has always existed. And it has always been a optional thing for people who are getting curbside pickup. And anything that is a dumpster is considered commercial. Most transfer stations don't take commercial at all. And so if you're doing commercial, you're outside, you're bringing it someplace specific. So what the fee schedule here has done, and what it did back in the original ordinance, was to make it match up with, well, if someone's bringing in commercial trash, for example, from a dumpster, or from a commercial business, that becomes, in essence, its own, you pay in, we pay out, we don't care how much you bring in or out, because it all evens itself out in budgets, so it doesn't hit all of the taxpayers.
But we're still paying twice.
You're not, because all of that is a revenue offset for that amount.
Okay.
So.
So Webster's Agriculture, a lot of my dump comes from the farm, hay rack, whatever, I mean, having that farm, I mean, Malo can tell you the same as Addy, I mean, having your cows, having your cows, you don't pay your taxes by having cows in the backyard.
Yeah. So I'm not going to disagree with you there.
I just.
The only thing I'm going to state is that the, the only thing that's changing is that the fee is changing from what used to be a, across the board, to what is again across the board.
It's changing from $70.
Whether there should or should not be a fee, whether the fee should be a subsidized level of fee, is a different discussion than updating the existing fee schedule.
Yeah, you're good, you're putting him out of business. Yeah.
The thing is, if he starts picking a dump up, right, you're going to have all, a lot more people going into the dump. How are you going to control it? It would be easier to control Kirk's load of trash than 50 people going in there. All it's, you know, say they all hit almost at the same time. So with him doing what he's doing, you're better off than you are with 50 cars going in there.
So how, can you explain?
Can I get your name for the minutes?
The difference? Oh, sorry, Pam.
We should have them state them too, even though we know.
Oh, yeah, I know who they are, so.
Emmett Beane, Addy Mark.
Can you explain how you differentiate that, though? You're saying commercial, but my garbage, like he's saying, if I take it to the dump, my is residential garbage, but now it's going into a dumpster, and now you're saying it's commercial. So how, how are you getting those fees to say they're different? Because it's the same trash, whether it's in the dumpster or we take it to the dump.
So, so what, that's one of the reasons why this has been done this way. So rather than a, we're worrying about whether it's commercial, whether we should accept it or not, how much fits in a truck versus not, is it mixed residential and commercial, rather than dealing with all of that, it's straight across the board. That's the way they wrote the original ordinance. And we're not trying to change that, we're trying to just make the fees even again the way they originally were. As far as the question for residential or commercial, it really doesn't matter. And basically, this makes it so that if you're somebody or a business, residential doesn't really matter, that produces a lot more trash than the average, you pay for that. And so the tax base gets the kind of low average that everybody's expected of standard throwing out of trash. That's the way that the ordinance was originally set up, why they set it up that way. We're just updating the fees to match what that vision was.
There's five households that foot their dump. The houses that we rent in the farm, in our dumpster, so there's five people right there a week that aren't taking that, polluting the air with their vehicles, wearing and tearing the driveway, going in and out to keep off the, I mean, in, in, help me with the commercial, because I didn't know we had any commercial businesses in Webster. Where are they?
So I'm, I'm not going to go with who is or is not commercial. There are some very obvious commercial businesses in Hopkinton, and this is in large part, part of their recommendations and reasonings, because we share the same fee schedule and use and ordinance with them. That's why it has to go through both, get past it both, et cetera.
I think this has been a long, long time, way back in the Dawcom days.
So like, when he's picking up dump with his one-ton, going to your house, my house, whatever, how does he pay for that? The tipping fee on that dump?
Same.
So is that commercial versus?
We don't care, we do, it, it doesn't matter.
So if he's getting charged for commercial for that?
Because we accept commercial, so we don't care. It's just by ton.
Even though it's individual houses, picking dump up at individual houses, throwing the back of the one-ton, and he's paying the same rate for that as he would be picking up a dumpster?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Yes.
That's definitely wrong.
The, the thing that I would state there is that, well, I appreciate everything they do, and we, I believe have them for a dumpster here at Town Hall. They stated at the joint meeting in Hopkinton that approximately this rate would be semi-reasonable. Also, knowing that none of the other haulers, of which there are at least two others in Hopkinton, take anything to our transfer station, they find it more financially acceptable and viable to take it elsewhere. So it's not like we are trying to put somebody out of business, we appreciate the business, we like them, but we're also not going to base everything off of one business.
So.
It is the consensus of what happened at all of the joint meetings.
So if we don't take our dump to the Webster-Hopkinton transfer dump, do we get our money back on our taxes?
No, the same way that you pay for a school, even if you don't have kids in it, no. If everybody pay, so the, the argument there, if you want to say that you want to do everything based on use and who you are or how much you use, Hopkinton's argument would be, that's why we have new bags, and Webster should adopt it. We in Webster generally have not thought that's a good idea.
But how much recycling? I, I go to that dump quite often over there. Other than glass and plastic, what do they recycle in the convoy?
Glass, plastic, paper, cardboard, metals, various other things that go into electronics like CPUs, several different kinds of plastics that are not recyclable elsewhere, tin cans, steel cans, aluminum cans, and at least three or four other smaller items, thin film plastic, which turns into like Trex deck. So all of those things are recycled at the transfer station. You get roughly 25% worth of typical person that comes in, roughly 25% turns into recycling, which turns into revenue.
Because most road agents run the transfer stations in a lot of the towns, and I know a lot of them.
So, again.
And they, back two years ago, everybody was recycling, and at the end of the day, it all went into the hop up because they weren't getting any money for the recycling.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not.
Two, two years ago, that was a very big worry.
I'm not making this stuff up.
Yep, two years ago, that was a very big worry. Fortunately, recycling has turned.
Has come around.
Quite a lot. And that's one of the reasons why on a fee schedule like this, it allows for being able to see that upfront, and this should get reviewed yearly, not once in 12 years, so that it stays current with what, for example, recycling revenues are, what the actual fees are to the transfer station to get rid of items. So I would expect that you would see the fees portion updated roughly yearly.
So how on, how many dollars on 100 or 1,000, however you do it, out of our tax dollars go to the Hopkinton dump? So if I pay $10,000 a year for taxes, how much of that goes to the Hopkinton dump?
I don't have those figures in front of me, but not a whole lot. It's somewhere around, it, it's like.
It would be mathematically.
Forty to 60,000 worth out of a multimillion-dollar budget. So not a whole lot.
Part of, part of this general waste tipping is, there again, it's like we're all talking about, it's, you're trying to disperse costs and not charge people. And I think part of the $70 was created back when they did the ordinance. And as we're trying to cover all the costs, it would, you know, they came up with that number. But with that being said, is there, and there again, this is wrapping your arms around all these way, you come up with.
Oh, there's a lot of pieces of it.
He did, he did a great job, and I can't say that I'm totally honestly always understand where everything comes from with this, to be honest with everybody. But my question would be, with the way the ordinance was written, and then, you know, the math that we all were doing, and I understand that part, to cover the dump costs, you know what I mean, there's trailers that, as Addy knows, and Plating Board talk about the trailers and the, and the, just the general maintenance and running it. They make very good points on the fact that, of the wear and tear of, of the, you know, you know, just having one guy go in and test set of, you know, right down to the whole stickers and all that lovely stuff.
Yes.
We talked about too, because.
Which expect to hear more about that sort of thing, stickers, sticker enforcement, a possible different sticker system, et cetera.
What side?
In the future. Hopkinton definitely wants to continue talking about those, but I want to try to make sure that we're limiting this to what it's supposed to be, which is only about the changes in fees. So we're not trying to change how the transfer station works, we're trying to adjust the fees to be current.
No, and that's all I.
And that's the only thing that this public hearing is about.
What, how much does it cost them now to get rid of the, like, the tipping fee as far as the outgoing? What's it costing for the outgoing part of it from there?
I don't have it right in front of me, but somewhere around the 100, just under.
Hundred bucks. So, so how come we're getting one point?
Because the average tip that goes in there also includes all of the recycling when it's, for example, from either a business or from a residence that's doing curbside pickup, because they don't bring in recycling separate or do a separate run for recycling, which accounts for about 25% of the waste, which would be revenue. So it actually costs us about $120 because it's the offset of the recycling as well as the.
Is that because nobody's going through it recycling, so it just gets.
Correct. It just goes into the hopper.
That's what you said, right.
And so we don't make money off of it, where we would normally make money off of 25% of it.
I have a quick question, George, ask a little help. So I see the brush and stumps, and I never throw away stumps, I'm, I'm just a regular Joe, and I'm going to get them ground before I throw them away. But, you know, throwing away, like, when you say brush, does that include like leaves and stuff like that? I mean, sometimes I've ripped up bittersweet and thrown it away, and I've never been charged with it, I just throw it away over there. And same with construction stuff, and I mean, I'm not doing any large-scale construction, but if I, if I tore down some drywall, or I tore down some studs, and I stuffed them in my truck and went to throw them away, I was just told what pile to put it in, I was never, ever charged for any of that. So are you talking, is this more like construction debris? Are you talking large-scale construction debris? Are you talking me with my pickup, driving 20 miles round trip to throw away garbage that I thought I could throw away? You know, because I mean, I, like with the other garbage that you talked about, I drive, and I take my truck, which is an eight-cylinder, versus obviously, I'm not putting garbage in my trunk of my car, and I wait till I have enough garbage to make it a worthwhile trip. And I drive 20 miles about approximately, round trip to throw away my garbage, you know, and what have you. So I'm just kind of, I'm just trying to understand, so let's, so two parts here really what I'm talking about, so that. So the, the brushes and stump thing, so that's, that's a new fee, it sounds like, and.
It's actually not. Um, the, so brushes and stumps was a hundred dollars per ton and was supposed to be weighed, uh, previously. The, what's listed here was the, we should just charge ten and twenty, uh, given by the DPW director over there. And so that's what, uh, was adopted, and both boards were like, that's what was recommended. I've since talked to the transfer station, uh, people at the transfer station that are doing the daily operations. And their comment wa, when they saw this was, well, that's nice, but what about all these other sizes of trucks and cars and, and so on? So probably that will go back to a weight based instead of a, this truck or that truck size. That would be something that we'll discuss for implementation, uh, at that double joint meeting in two weeks. The, um, the second comment that they made about this was that generally what they consider brush and stumps is not, for example, leaves and yard waste, but brush is over five inches in diameter.
Okay.
So that's where they're delineating their size, like, okay, now you should probably go get on the scale with, you know, your truck full of large stuff.
Okay, so the second part of my question, um, the construction debris, that doesn't necessarily talk about, like a pickup, pickup sized truck. Are you talking like a large scale construction debris? Cause I mean, I've done small stuff myself.
Construction debris is done by weight, not by like truckload?
Well, I mean, I've had like a pickup truck full of, you know, maybe some ripped, like an old, I did a chicken coop. Tore down my chicken coop, rebuilt the chicken coop, filled the back of my truck. I was just told, put it in that pile. If it's this pressure treated, put it here, if it's this, put it there, or painted or whatever. And I was never charged for it, never had to weigh.
You smiled at him just right, didn't you?
Apparently I, apparently I, I, I look good and white, I guess.
So, so one of the things I'll bring up that was an additional oddity in the previous ordinance, which is also why, for example, many people have never paid for permit stickers, even though it was listed as a dollar in the ordinance, is most of the fees in the ex, previous ordinance say may charge, not will, not this is the price, but may charge this price. And so putting everything on an equal footing and not to the whims of whoever's there, whether they happen to have more people or time or not, or whether you're somebody they like or not, or see often or talk to them, uh, just making it very cut and dry, uh, that is an additional change in there.
So like this, this one fifty charge, is that like by the ton? Is that what you're saying? Cause it doesn't take much to make a ton of wood, you know?
Yes, it is by ton.
So what's gonna happen is like last year at the floodgate on Little Hill.
And if you were at a ton, no matter what, they would put you on this, on the scale anyway.
Right. I mean, I have a half ton truck, so it's not like I'm gonna stuff a ton in there, but, but nevertheless, you know, I mean, I'm not talking about bringing multiple, multiple loads. Like, I'm not renovating my house and bringing a dumpster there. I'm talking about a pickup truck worth of stuff, you know? And then when you renovate it and make something look good, and then they come in and assess it, now you get jacked on that too. You know, so, I don't know. I find it pretty frustrating, the whole thing.
So what I was saying there, last, was it last year or the year before, started in the floodgate on Little Hill, even beo, on, beyond in Salisbury, all the way to the Pearson farm. Somebody cut up a boat with a sawzall and put that all the way in the ditch. It was a love seat, there was a couch, and there was a bed and about six mattresses. I got paid to pick it all up. It cost the town a lot of money that day to go clean all that stuff up and haul it to the dump, because somebody didn't want to pay to get rid of it. And there's a, there's a hot water heater down over the bank on Bashing Hollow Road for two day, for two years. It's way down over the bank on somebody's property, cause somebody didn't wanna take it to the dump.
So I'll, I'll give you the perfect, uh, response to that. Right now, uh, and in what we've put here, there's no additional charges for those. For example, the water heater actually makes the town's money, and there's no charge for it. Many of the charges for what are called white goods, um, are not charges, like, they used to be in the ordinance and they're not anymore. So those have all been removed, all been streamlined. We often have not been charging them because of the whole may thing.
Don't be paid for it.
But they've all been, been gotten off. The things, for example, like mattresses, those just go in as normal waste into the hopper, so.
How about like when they dump it over to my gravel pit? Do I have to pay to get rid of it when it's there? If I get a couch and mattresses and kids clothes and.
A camp.
Three wheelers, a camper, or whatever, fifty-five gallon drums.
Do you get a nice camper?
Well, I've got one.
Very nice.
Over there, that's not even remotely funny, that they use that for a dump, cause they don't wanna pay the money.
So again, most of what we.
Take that down there for your charge?
Most of what we have, uh, is, like, so for example, you, you talk about those things, like a vehicle. That's not accepted at the dump anyway. So that has nothing to do with this.
I'm talking couches and mattresses, kids clothes, little big wheels and things like that.
Sounds like we should talk to your police department and ask them, uh, to give them some footage so you know who did it.
Probably, uh, the police department we got now would do something about it, but the other one didn't.
No, so, so that, that's where I would suggest that. We're, we're not trying to account for other people.
Locking.
So, uh, let's bring this back to the fees. Are there any more comments on specifically the amounts of the fees?
Rita Blanchard, I want to elaborate on what you said, cause I live on a dead end road and I am forever picking up tires on the last house. And I am forever picking up tires and other crap out of my ditch that goes past my house. People go down and just, they don't wanna pay ten dollars a tire.
Right.
They're throwing that in the, in the ditch. Well, and I go to the dump, and I do gotta pay those ten dollars a tire.
So I will state that we're not changing passenger tires, so it not going up, it's not gonna get any worse.
It doesn't matter. I should get paid for it. Other people don't wanna pay for it. I know I pay for them.
Right.
And you.
Well, there should be somebody getting caught and fined for littering.
Dead end road, out in the boondocks.
Yep.
Not heavily police patrol. We do put out cameras, but I don't know who drove it the other day. We're like, what is this lady doing? Cause she went down and parked, you know, so I, I gotta police my own road. But it's, you're gonna see more of this crap, is what I'm saying.
We can't fix with these fees.
You put up Kurt's fee to buck twenty. People are not gonna use him, cause they can't afford it, for starters. And then, you know, I don't know if you get, do bags or whatever. Her bag, she's going, I'm not gonna pay this fee. Cause you know, you, you know what's going, you know that's, that his dump fee's going up and driving him out of business. But people, cause that people aren't gonna pay that fee, and then what are they gonna do? They're gonna come down my little dead end road and throw their shit in my ditch.
Right. I'll have a man fill over at Lake Winniferk. That's what I'll have. That's not gonna set that good.
You'll have to try to.
I've already been there, done that already, picked it up, okay? And I'm not picking up anybody else's junk.
You know, do I put the tires in the road and hope for the best?
Yeah.
Or do I take them to the dump and pay ten bucks a tire?
That's what I guess, that's.
I don't want my, I don't want my land looking like a freaking dump.
I, I don't have an answer to fix the problem that people have, uh, with not doing the right thing.
But I'm gonna say it's gonna get worse.
Point noted.
And every spring it's bad when the snow melts.
Yes. E- even if it's not tires, every road is really bad in the spring when the snow melts.
And, uh, cause there's no, nobody has any business going past my house.
And for, it won't help with tires, but, uh, at least in the spring when the snow is melting, uh, we do actually do an organized cleanup. We have blue bags that you can take.
Never seen a cleanup on my road.
And if you take the, if you take the blue bags and load it up with all the stuff on the side of the road, there's guaranteed no charge for any of that stuff. You can drop it here, you can drop it there. Even if you're doing heavy amounts of load, you just throw those in. It's, it's, and we can take care of all of that for you. That's part of the roadside cleanup program that, that gets done.
So springtime over there, I could take my load and just scoop the stuff up, take it out to White Plains Road, dump it, and you guys will pick it all up. Is that correct?
We're not picking it up. We're offering the bags so that people don't pay to pick it up and, and get rid of it.
But that will be the way you get them, so I don't have to take and pick it up.
Okay, do we have further comments on the amount of the fees?
I guess my last question will probably be, is any of this stuff debatable? I mean, we're talking, we're saying, I mean, but at some point, you know, just like increased taxes and stuff like that, at some point, people have to be like, is there something that could be said to say, listen, no. You know, so I guess that's my question. And what I've been hearing is not Webster, but well, Hopkinton said. Hopkinton, I don't give a rat's ass about Hopkinton, to be completely honest with you. They pay, they pay so much tax. A friend of mine owns a house there right by the school. It's like eleven thousand dollars a year just owning their home there.
That all, that all.
Right.
We are very fortunate to live in Webster, as far as taxes are concerned, and we do our best here to try to make sure that that continues. This is part of that, in order to help keep property taxes down. The overuse or the really large use of the transfer station paying into it has always been a revenue offset. This brings that revenue up to what it was supposed to be and the way that it was in twenty twelve. That's what these fees are designed to do. The, your other point about when is there a, say, a back and forth? There's been a lot of it at many, many meetings since almost twenty twelve, when they started trying to update the ordinance, uh, and the fee schedule. There's been, the usual sticking point is, but what about green bags? And so we've tried to go past that and say, we just wanna fix the fee schedules. Stop telling us we need green bags.
Well, just like what I heard about Hopkinton is, five percent of the people voted on green bags, the other ninety-five percent probably didn't even know there was a meeting going on. You know, I think that's, that's.
If you live in New Hampshire and you don't know that town meeting is a thing, probably make sure that you know that town meeting happens once a year, roughly in March. There are a couple towns that do it on a different schedule, but usually in March, and that's where these things are voted on.
I think we have a pretty good turnout when it comes to that.
We usually do quite well. Um, it's still a couple hundred people at most, as opposed to the three thousand some odd people that are here. So it's still a very small percentage, even though we have a very good turnout comparatively and percentage wise compared to many towns. But again, um, so there have been many meetings. There've been a lot of things voiced at those meetings, both with previous boards and with the current boards that have been meeting jointly for at least six months now. And so there've been a lot of different meetings, a lot of work sessions, a lot of back and forth, a lot of research with the transfer station, coming up with the numbers that make sense. This is now the public hearing, so it's, the boards have agreed that these are the numbers that make sense to present to people. If everybody comes back and says, this is horrible, um, then the boards can go back to the drawing board. If it's a minority of people, a couple, you know, that show up and say that this is a bad idea, then you may not see that there's a rewrite. It may be a, people said this, how do we account for this? Is there something future we can work on in the ordinance that adjusts this, for example?
Cause I was gonna make, that's what, what I, prior, I was talking for a second. Where's the, where's the, what's the ordinance part of the general waste tipping? Where it used to be when they first came up with the dump, the seventy dollars, and then, you know? And, and I know that there, there was, there was a lot of research and just because when we come to budget times, our, our whole trash part line of the budget has gone up quite a bit, that w, like, the past, uh, am I, uh, correct me? Cause I'm, I'm going off my memory, which is kind of sometimes scary. Um, past boards just had not even been aware of the price of everything going up and that there, that when all of a sudden they, you come to, come to summer in August, or people, our budgets together, right? Yeah, the, the trash, you know, the transfer station's gonna need another twenty, thirty thousand dollars. And we hadn't budgeted for that, because it was, you know, kind of not being.
Yeah, there, there really wasn't, uh, good communication in the past to say, this is what's.
That's what I'm trying to say. And that's why they're coming to this part of, and I, I don't disagree with what they're saying for the fact of, and, and that's the part that's always the hardest thing. How do you make it the most fair for everyone and not raise people's taxes, right? And I, and I don't disagree with you with the, and so I'm kinda sitting here as, when we were putting this together, which Davis done a fantastic job doing research and cost, and to try to keep everybody's taxes down, right? What I'm kind of understanding is, it's the ordinance that would need to be relooked at if we could somehow, and I don't know, I'm not a magical problem solver, somewhat look at the fact of what benefit does somebody like MT Trash have? Instead of having every Tom, Dick and Harry in this town, or every Tom, Dick and Harry in, in Hopkinton, going in and out of the dump. I don't know that I have an answer to that, but like I said, when we were working on all these fees and everything, it's, it's really, cause I feel like we got kind of blindsided with, okay, the transfer station Hopkinton needs this much money or else, right?
Yeah.
And so, so either we address it.
Oh, we gotta address.
Right, right?
Yeah.
But, or, or pay out of the tax.
How come we don't look into, why, why doesn't that trash go to wheel abrader? Where they can make electricity with it and.
And, and box.
Useful rather than putting it in the ground in Middleton, and it's there forever.
So.
And that doesn't make any sense to me, cause I know it's a hundred miles from here to the Chip, Chipmunks in Bethlehem. Right on the nut, it's a hundred.
So, don't let me forget to go back to that point. Uh, there was something really interesting that Neil said at our last joint meeting that I wanna go back to for that. Um, to address, uh, the previous point in that Marlo expanded on, the changes to the ordinance, changes to the way the dump work, oh, sorry, the transfer station works, changes to the way stickers are issued and enforced, uh, changes to the way they enforce their green bag program, changes to things like the way that MT Trash maybe should get compensated instead of charged, changes to the way that, uh, maybe they start doing curbside pickup for everybody instead of everybody taking stuff in, and then including recycling in that, because now you have enough mass to do that effectively and efficiently. Those are all discussions that still need to be had. Those are discussions we hope to have as joint boards in the continuing future. Until we get there, we need to, as a favorite quote of mine, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And so we can only make incremental better changes as the boards on both sides agree to get things done. The first topic that is the fees, and that will help keep our taxes at a lower rate, as well as allow for large use to not affect our tax rate in the future, as long as we keep it at that same equal level that should be getting looked at every year.
I just think that when you stop and look at the total picture of everything going on, like we're going down there, we're gonna buy those trails for what, a hundred and some thousand bucks a piece, we're gonna get two of them. And I grant it the live floor thing, it's like if you had a live floor, you could do away with all the pack of stuff and everything and go from over here to, uh, Hopkin into, to Pennecook and dump it, and.
I could do that on a Saturday morning.
Well, I knew you could. You could do it at night.
And so, so again, I don't wanna get into how they run day to day.
We should have a say in looking at that, because that makes more sense than taking it to Bethlehem, putting it in the ground, and, uh, yeah, they gotta rub a skin, but you know what those are. They're, they're not gonna hold.
Again, there's, there's many other topics that need to be and should be and hopefully are getting scheduled to be. and hopefully are getting scheduled to be discussed about the transfer station.
Well, I think we should bring that one up.
And, and we've actually brought some of those up, we plan to have some of those coming up.
Stop listening to us either that, or we should maybe have our own little transfer station with one trailer, dump it in there, and it's over there once a week. Probably wouldn't fill it.
Now, regarding your comment about putting in a landfill.
I'm not saying put in a landfill, I'm just saying...
No, no, you, you made the comment about traveling to put it in a landfill versus burning it. The, the interesting part there that Neil shared at the last meeting was that we have been getting an exceedingly good deal, that's way better than all of the other surrounding towns.
Yeah.
And the reason for that, and why it would cost us a lot more, for example, to go burn it, is that there's a weird quirk in the way that New Hampshire has worded it stuff, which New Hampshire has, but New Hampshire state is now starting to look at. We take a lot of trash from other neighboring states.
Which is wrong.
Yeah, New York, Massachusetts, Connecticut.
In order for those companies and landfills to take enough to make the huge money from the other states, they need ours. And so we pay a lot lower rate in order to get them to that quota. I believe Neil said that that expires either this year or next year. So after that, the general trash rate would probably be a lot higher.
Yeah, and so you should be thinking about it now.
Yeah.
Instead of when it all of a sudden, hey, we gotta go with this load of dump, and now it's gonna cost us double or nothing. And I don't want them dumping it over to Lake One Pocket, so...
So I just, my last thing is, I know a few years ago, a load of gravel was a hundred and twenty dollars, and now it's two seventy. And a ton of salt, when I first started out, was thirty-three dollars a ton, and now I'm paying eighty-eight dollars, or the town's paying eighty-eight dollars a ton. And ninety per ton. But, and, and I know the cost of things
Gone up.
Have gone crazy, but to jump that fifty bucks a ton all at once, you're gonna, you're gonna put the guy out of business.
It's gonna be excessive for us to boot.
And I'm not saying it shouldn't get there, but maybe not all at once.
Like ten dollars a year for so many years or something?
I mean, it, it's not, it's not our fault or Kurt's fault from MT Trash that nobody's done anything with these prices since 2012. And, I mean, that would be like renting a house and paying 2012 prices, and then the guy that you're renting from comes up and says, oh, that's not a thousand dollars a month anymore, that's five thousand. Well, you're gonna have to move out and go live in your car. It's true. So I'm not saying, I mean, no one knows any better than I do the, what stuff costs in fuel and insurance and wages, but, I mean, fifty bucks all at once, I mean, and I, I, I'm sorry I'm hopping on it, but I hate like heck to see the guy go out of business, a family-run business, and... I know what he gets for a dumpster a month, and I know what Norton gets, and...
Yeah, so just, I'll go to you in one second, I just wanted to respond to that. The... Looking at the generic inflation fee, which is more now compared to when it was, it was almost a hundred dollars for, based on the inflationary amount. Most of these fees and the adjustments are really close to or slightly under what inflationary adjustments would be. Some of them, like the tipping fee, are slightly over, because that accounts for the cost of getting rid of it. Because not everything goes up the same.
I'm not saying it's not supposed to be there, but all, all at once, all at once.
So perhaps, perhaps we bring in and suggest a more gradual change. The, the key that I would see there, and I'm just thinking out loud, the key that I would see there is if you're... If, if you expect that the, this is one twenty, and that in a year or two, in order to pay what the going rate is, instead of our really discounted rate, should be close to one fifty. Going up incrementally is gonna be really challenging in order to get to where you need to in a reasonable time. But that is definitely a good suggestion that we should bring back to the joint meeting. And, and that's what we're trying to do here, is to solicit feedback, to bring to that joint meeting where the final decisions and stuff will be made.
I mean, I've got three dumpsters down back. Light iron, number one iron, and aluminum. And they get full. Hire a guy with a dumpster, roll off, load them in, send them to Concord. I mean, there's, there's money, some of the light iron, you don't make any money on, you just cover the cost of getting it to Concord, but there's ways to off, there's ways to offset stuff.
Yeah. Do we have, yes.
I have a question. So my understanding is MT Trash only picks up residential trash? Is that my understanding?
No, no. They pick up residential trash, they pick up trash for at least Webster, but I believe Hopkinton Town as well. They also pick up some of the commercial businesses, at least in Hopkinton.
Okay, so what I, what I, you could suggest is, he picks up residential trash on Mondays and Wednesdays and gets less of a fee until he does the commercial stuff, and then he can get more of a fee. So he has a set day to do residential, and then he doesn't have the whole fee every single time.
Yeah, but when you've got a dumpster, that you've got four houses going into that dumpster, it's classified as commercial trash.
But it's residential trash, not commercial.
Right, but, so you're right.
So on certain days, you can pick up that dumpster, that is all residential trash.
He comes Monday.
He could go on Mondays and Wednesday mornings or afternoons, and then that's only residential trash he's dumping off, and it would be less of a fee.
Because the taxpayer, we've already paid for that. So, I don't know, you guys got a lot to figure out. And, and I know you guys do a good job at things, and I just...
Yeah, again, I, I would suggest that there, there is a very good and valuable discussion on how and what role haulers play versus doing generic curbside pickup versus people going and taking their own trash and having the, the sorted recycling that gives us revenue. We hope to be having those discussions with Hopkinton, we've asked for time to have those discussions. This is not that discussion. And so, while it is certainly related, that's, that's not a reason to set a fee at what the fee shouldn't be at, it's a reason to do the other stuff the right way too. And so that, that's what we're trying to get to.
Quick question, what, what's the ratio of people at Webster, now what is it, Hopkinton, Kentuckahoke? Kentuckahoke, is that actually a town that's really...
Twenty-five percent, right?
Yeah, Hopkinton, Webster is always roughly seventy-five, twenty-five. Right now, it's about seventy-six, twenty-four.
And with the twenty-four?
Yeah. And so we, we, we have typically always paid a quarter of the operating fees and gotten a quarter of the revenues to, to do offsets. One exception is, since they're the only ones with green bags, all of the green bag revenue goes only to them.
They sell the green bags.
And to, to answer the, the similar question to what you've mentioned, the way that that's done with the green bag ordinance is, if they pick up all residential trash that's in green bags, there's zero tipping fee. Because they already know for sure that's residential trash.
Yeah, well, green bags.
So obviously, that's a different discussion.
Right.
So that is a different discussion.
But, but if it said only on Wednesday, Mondays and Wednesdays is residential trash, when MT can bring it in. And then that's, you know, you're gonna have to take, take my word on it, you know? If you don't believe me, rip open a bag and see that it's not the can from yesterday, or whatever. But I mean, it's just like when they used to do the septic, when they used to pump out the septic. It would, used to go to Hopkinton, and you could only have it done on Fridays, because that was the only day that they would accept it. So, you know, they can...
Yeah, and I've, and I've heard, I've heard, like, I know, we were doing a job in Alton, and they'd only take wood debris on a Mondays, I mean, Fridays and Mondays, and that's it. So you had to, if you wanted to not get a big tipping fee, you waited until, I think it was ten dollars or something, instead of twice the amount. Or that's the only days they've actually accepted it.
Right, so I mean, if they could set days, I mean, that's something to look into.
And, and sometimes that for, like, we only accept it these days is because that's when they have another person on staff for manning scales or, or something of that nature.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they could also stop putting mattresses and box springs and fiberglass tubs and showers in the hopper. I mean, that, that, that takes up waste, that takes up space, it takes up weight.
But what would it go into instead?
I don't know, but they gotta, you know, you burn the mattresses.
So the...
Well, hell, we're accepting mattresses.
Well, Lake One Pocket does too, Kentuckahoke.
Well, I mean, there must be some way, I don't know, I mean, or just have a different comp report or something. Instead of, this is the waste we have to get rid of, and this is what we're gonna get charged for this.
Better get some hefty bags this spring.
Yeah, so, so we've got the different piles for, like, the
Yeah.
mass waste, which is what the hopper is, versus the construction and so on. So that does exist to some degree, not quite to that scale in, in ease of, of management. They've actually talked about completely redesigning the entire transfer station. So there are all kinds of different routes you can go, and they get super expensive as soon as you start going down them. And so we're trying to do the right, the, the less expensive for the town things at this point that can help us get to a more sustainable manageable level. With that, I think we have heard the comments pretty loud and clear. Are there further different comments?
When the time comes to redesign, are we gonna have a say in that down there?
Twenty-five percent?
If it happens, yes.
Again, again, it works kind of, we work hard to...
I, I, I get it.
That was in the agreement that we, that we ratified at town meeting.
How much does it cost the town of Salisbury to get rid of all their trash over there? Have you ever checked through that?
I have not checked with Salisbury. I can tell you that, for example, with the tipping fees, the NARA, which is the National Whatever Refuge Something Association, I probably got the, the wrong, but it's basically, they look at all the transfer and trash recycling centers. Their suggestion for the tipping fee to Hopkinton and the Hopkinton-Webster transfer station was a hundred and fifty dollars. The, a presentation done by the Hopkinton Board for full cost, what it should be, was a hundred and fifty-seven dollars for the tipping fee. The, uh, the, what comes in nearby towns is anywhere from a hundred and fifty-five at the low end for Concord, for in Concord residents, to three hundred and fifty.
Yeah, that's Casella, right? And that's going to the landfill now, but aren't they gonna be going...
So everywhere else is significantly higher.
Right, but that, that's going to Littleton. So aren't they gonna be, their contract, Concord contract is up, and they're gonna go to wheel operator, is that correct?
I don't know what their contract deals are.
I think you're gonna find it, they're gonna, within a year.
As far as I know, their city council has not yet decided on what's happening, but that's up to them.
Oh, I know, but I'm just saying.
But as far as the comparison, since, since you're asking about that and commenting on it, those are the comparisons nearby that I do have numbers for.
They, we should be looking into down the road, when our, our day is up here, it's gonna be what, Guttly, you just said?
Yep.
Yeah, so we should be thinking about that, like...
And what the requirements are compared to hauling it, I guess, you know what I mean?
Well, Wanton and Andover, and that, I mean, they're the simplest done.
Yeah.
It's just, I mean, it's just, it's a one-man band on a Saturday.
So, do we have further different comments on the fees? Before we close the public hearing?
Well, I do have one comment.
Yes.
When they said that it was a hundred and twenty dollars, and twenty-five dollars of it was because people don't recycle when the MT, the MT Trash picks up.
Uh, sure.
Right, not, not everybody in Hopkinton does either, so I mean, that, that extra twenty dollars doesn't make, even though they use the green bags.
Yeah, so the, the, yes.
Take your white bag and put it in the green bag.
So regardless of green bags, yes, the, so the average across, including the amount that people are not recycling now, over several years, has been roughly twenty-five percent. And so that's where that number's coming from. If those people were actually doing recycling, instead of just throwing it in a green bag or to MT Trash, if they were bringing recycling in, it would probably be higher. That's implementation of those programs, not, but yeah, that's, that is where that number comes from.
I get older, and my, all the relatives I have in this area are getting older. My son takes my husband's truck, and goes to ten houses and picks up all their trash. Household trash, does he get that one hundred and twenty dollar tipping fee?
If it's over four hundred pounds in that truck at that one time, yes.
Over four hundred pounds.
Right, I thought it was three, you said four.
So the way that it was in the distinct ordinance was four. There, the discussions on how to address that was, and that particular problem of, yeah, I picked up, you know, four bags from this neighbor and three bags from that neighbor. There have been a couple different thoughts on how to do that. And the part, part of that is definition, and part of it is how do we word that correctly? One of the thoughts that I had suggested, and we may revisit at some point, is that the way that it is done is, if the person can take the stuff and toss it in the hopper instead of having to haul it and tip it, then it should just be covered as normal. Because, yeah, it's a household trash bag, just toss it. If you can go toss it, then you're fine.
Well, if I have, if I have, if I just stopped and picked up, I, I helped your son that day.
And again, this, this is why the wording matters, and that's still being...
I have a one-ton dump truck. Am I, are they gonna want me out there lugging bag after bag twenty feet across the road?
You're gonna be way over the four hundred pounds if you're looking at a full one ton.
Huh?
If you're looking at a full, like, ton, then you're way over the four hundred pounds anyway.
Right, but I just picked up the twelve people's garbage that week. They gonna want me to throw it in bag after bag, or they want me to back in and dump it and get the hell out of there? I mean, we could go on all night long.
That's what I, I...
Again, this, this is all part of the other discussions that need to happen, not the fee discussion. And so this is all focused on the fees.
They gonna have a big...
Completely agree, all the other discussions need to happen.
When are those gonna happen?
Hopefully soon, we've asked for at least a few of those to happen.
Probably oughta be an outside one, if we get everybody together, huh?
Are there any?
I, I just have a quick comment, because he brought up Casella. I was gonna go sit by you and make you make the comment. There, under the highly praised current agreement in Concord, which expires the end of June, the city pays approximately seventy per ton for, for the municipal solid waste. With their new agreement, they're gonna pay a hundred dollars per ton. And I'm pretty sure in this article, if I read the whole, pulled the whole article up for you, actually, it says it right here, no longer will Concord's waste be transported over eighty miles to North Country Environmental Services landfill in Bethlehem. It'll be going to the wheel operator. That's twenty dollars, that's on ours.
No, it's reality.
So, one of the things that you have to look at there is the wording that they used, which is municipal trash. Municipal trash that comes from our municipal buildings and Hopkinton's municipal works is nothing. We don't, we don't pay for it. That's free, because it's part of our city, or in their case, or town... That's free because it's part of our city or, in their case, or towns, in our case, uh, operations, uh, which is standard taxpayer generally. You can argue that that means.
I'm just asking, I'm just, I'm reading this out of the Concord mother.
So, we don't necessarily have, uh, the extra incentive to do recycling that others do financially, um, as the town hall, for example. We do, 'cause we care, um, but those are, those are things that, again, are part of existing ordinance and agreements that, uh, we're not trying to change or address at this time.
Okay.
We do, we do hope to touch on all of these issues in the future.
So, if you said the town's dump gets taken for free, okay?
I believe, I, like, we're gonna pay MT because they pick up the dumpster and have that.
Correct, right. You pay, right. But it's not free, because if you have a ton of dump, he picks up a ton of dump out of your dumpster, he's gonna have to pay another hundred and twenty dollars on top of that. It's not free.
The, the way the agreements are written, and, and this is to the point of when you go do things or specific times to do things, and also to the, your point of efficiencies of, well, it's one truck, one time. If it's one truck, one time, things aren't separated, so you can't do that. If you're doing, well, this is some residential from here, some residential from there, okay, now this is only the municipal buildings, so that's this, this is only the commercial, now you've got all of the same traffic, basically, anyway, uh, and all of the same kinds of emissions, 'cause you're covering the entire loop multiple times instead of once.
But you just said something interesting, pardon me for interrupting.
So, I'll, I'll let you go in a second. So, so all of that is, again, not the fee schedule, but is something that we hope to look at further in the ordinance and in the near future. But yes.
How does MT Trash discern? So, you said you, you guys don't pay for your municipality stuff, you pay MT Trash.
The agreements are that the municipality, the trash generated from municipal work in Hopkinton and Webster is not charged, the tipping, et cetera.
He doesn't, but he gets charged for it at the end of the day.
How, how does he, that's, that's my question, is how does he discern what's your trash?
So, so, not, not every one of his tips is charged. Um, if they're all green bags, they're not charged. If they're all municipal, they shouldn't be getting charged.
But how, how does the dump know that it's munis- municipal?
You might have to get stamps on it.
In, in theory, they have a process and he tells them. In, in practice, I couldn't tell you what it is in a day-to-day.
So, maybe you guys just go in on green bag day.
So, I mean, Hopkinton's gonna push the green bag thing and, and push it towards us. In, in Maine, in a town, you know, you buy stickers, one sticker and it can go on any size bag that you buy at the store, not their little five-bag zip box. So, that's something, if Hopkinton wants to push the issue.
There.
Pushback.
So, I, I'll, I'll address that in one second, just to give you more context, because I like to put out as much information as I can. But before I do that, do we have any further comments on the fee schedule and the particular fees?
I guess the gentle, general consensus is that the tipping fee's too much.
Yeah, bottom line.
So, so, yes.
So, one, have, have anybody from Webster? I, i- if Webster wanted to pull out of the dump, but would, how many millions of dollars would it cost him?
That would be a good question, uh.
And what would be the ramifications?
A lot, and then we would also have to open our own.
No, no, I mean, I, I, I mean, a lot, it's a lot, a million, it's a lot, ten grand. So, we're married to them, is what you're telling me right now, with people here.
We would have to, there, it's actually in the agreement, and there's like a timeframe of payout and a timeframe of when you're not allowed to do it. There's a, if you stop paying, you're not allowed to use it, sort of clause, uh, but there's also a, like, if anybody wants to leave the agreement, which has been done in the past, we're the remaining two towns, um, that are part of a joint transfer station. So, there are ways to do that. I haven't done the calculation on the costs lately, but, um.
I haven't either, but.
We can certainly look into that.
I was just curious, just.
That would be, be a good idea, plus see what so, what it costs Salisbury, curiosity.
It's going to, so the thing to keep in mind there is it's als- any kind of pullout is also going to include, uh, the fees to handle what's already there. So, for example, there's a PFAS mitigation that's upcoming, that is super expensive.
You're not getting out of that.
Even if we pulled out today, we would still be paying for that.
Yeah, you're not, we're not getting out of that.
And the previous towns that were using it when it was a dump, before it was a transfer station, they're just finishing paying for the part of turning it into a capped dump and transfer station. Uh, so even though they've not been part of it for many years now. Uh, so, to put that in context, it's, it's continuing and it's a lot. I don't have to write the exact number, but.
Right, the contaminated wells, the wells that we bought, I mean, it's a lot.
Yeah.
So, all right, thank you.
Okay, uh, seeing no further comment on the fees specifically, I'm gonna close the, uh, public hearing portion on the fee schedule at seven forty-nine. And I know I was gonna address your comment and I forgot what it was.
About the tickets and sort of the stupid green bags.
Oh, yes, thank you. So, they've actually brought up at, uh, some of their stuff, several different options, whether it's stickers, bags, uh, different types of bags, sizes of bags, doing haulers, doing, uh, the trash cans on the side of the road instead, uh, specific bin that you can use, they've gone down the gamut of it all. The short of it is, uh, has been from their discussions, either you full-out do it and compensate for curbside pickup for everybody and accept that you're gonna pay a lot more because you're not getting the recycling, 'cause it's single-stroop recycling, and there's no revenue in that. Either you go that route, or you're dealing with so much in overhead for additional, let me find all of the stickers on the bags instead of, yep, that's a pile of green bags, uh, that you lose anything from the additional load on needing your stuff. That's obviously something else, uh, but I wanted to give you that information, 'cause they did actually talk about it in some of their meetings when they were talking about their green bag program, which, which may or may not go up on their warrant article to abandon again this year. That has come up several, roughly every other year over there.
Green bags are expensive and they always sell so colonial, you know, if they colonial what's up.
And they're talking about dramatically raising their fees for the bags, too, because they've been way underpriced for a long time.
So, they think six dollars for five bags was underpriced?
Yeah, they do. Uh, so, I, I leave that discussion to Hopkinton, 'cause we don't have the green bag program, and hopefully we keep it that way.
Yeah.
Uh, but, um, yes, I wanted to give you that information, 'cause they have talked about it, and you can go check out their work session and minutes from it if you want further information. Okay, uh, moving on, Standard Department head meeting. Okay, everybody is welcome, it's still public, it's still public meeting.
What'd you just say?
Everybody's welcome to hear what they have to say.
Yeah, we're really not asking you to leave. Stay for all the fun. Sure.
If, if you wanna know what these folks do, yeah.
Thank you, Paul.
I was sleeping. And, and, you know, whatever.
Well, yeah, we'll save, we'll, we'll, of course, bring those comments up later.
I need to use the boys' room.
Certainly.
We're gonna let the cheese start, I'm sure you already know what he's gonna say.
You can catch up.
Tell them, tell them I've been a bad boy.
There's no doubt about that.
Yeah, yeah, we don't need to discuss it even.
So, uh, let me see, financials. So, as of the twenty-fourth, we've used a hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-two cents out of our twenty-four budget, still have sixty-one point eight-six percent remaining, which leaves us plenty. On the first of May to thirty-first, twenty-four motor vehicle stops, three summonses, hundred and, four hundred and sixty-five dollars in fines, fifty-five calls for service for the month, um, some of the weird ones, um, usually the typical ones, but we had a lot of mental health calls, which was kind of, you know, six of them. And a lot of welfare checks, which is when you, um, I don't know if it's the elderly, but it seems like everyone in our elderly that we did.
Yeah, I just kinda left it.
No, I just didn't want you to forget it, you might need it for ride home.
Um, but, the typical ones, a lot of citizens assist, animal complaints, plus the cruelty of the animals. Thank God for the, uh, the SPCA, they came up and took some of the horses and they, they were good. I had two part-timers, I think if you read the slip, I got two part-timers that are full-time certified that'll look in to work some part-time hours. And one of them, um, his sergeant already works for us, so he's a reliable guy. It's nice. That may work, uh, four days a week for us.
That's great.
That'd be awesome. Um, I do have one purchase order.
Before you jump there.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Do you have theft, uh, listed?
Yes.
Which I don't normally see listed. Is that a rash amount or a normal amount or a specific case?
It was a theft from an unlocked car, um, that they left on the side of the road.
Yeah, okay.
And what was taken was a, uh, broken cellphone that was sitting on the dashboard.
Boy, the excitement.
Don't leave it unlocked and leave it on the dashboard, 'cause it won't be there. Now, what about, what about the, what about the person that woke up in the middle of the night, went downstairs and somebody, stranger in the house watching TV?
Yeah, we, uh, he, he, the subject that was inside the house, so, let me back up a little bit. Somebody woke up in the morning and they had left their door unlocked and woke up and came downstairs in the morning for coffee and there's a guy sitting on the couch watching TV.
Oh, my God.
And, uh.
In Webster?
Yeah.
That's scary.
So, last week he did it in Warner.
Oh.
He did it in Bosquen two weeks before that.
Oh, my God.
He's, that was one of the mental issues that we took down to IEA.
Was that the first time he got caught, is that why?
Oh, no, he's getting caught every time. He just sits there and waits.
Maybe 'cause he thinks it's a meal or something, is that what?
He just sits there and watches TV. I don't know, he finds the remote controls and turns it on, maybe he doesn't have cable at home, I don't know.
Well, that could happen to anyone.
No, I, I heard that, the other day, I didn't know if it was a rumor, and I was gonna ask you this morning, and I, um, it slipped my mind.
The, the, the person whose house that was, uh, has posts on Facebook about it, if anyone is curious. I will be there, since we're not gonna stay.
They're just lucky that it was somebody's house like that and not somebody else's house, 'cause they'd be calling for an ambulance.
No, it says undertaker.
Well, they call, call the ambulance first and then you undertaker.
It, it was also, um, which people happened to be home, 'cause the household could have been that kind of house.
Oh, absolutely.
Anyway, uh, yes, so thank you.
Um, so I have a purchase order, and it's for the public safety building, for the seal coating that we had set aside for. Um, and, um, he said he'd hold true to the same cost that he did a year ago, so this will.
That's nice.
This will, um, extend that parking lot for at least a few years, which is gonna be, it's well-needed. When was the last time it was seal-coated?
I think La Mano, um, Brian, Mo, La Mano, I'm here.
Like, twenty years ago?
It's been a long time.
Eighteen, twenty years ago. He's gonna do this.
Yeah, that's for here and there.
Run your cracks and kill the cracks and everything.
All right, yeah, so the, this is the part that I had forgotten about, is the striping there, but also here, too.
Yes.
Which, uh, will be nice, 'cause a lot of people have no idea.
They don't know where to park down here.
Good luck, 'cause I hate to be the one to stripe it, because I.
I don't wanna figure out.
You mean, you mean where are they gonna do it?
Yeah, to get, to have, make people park.
Well, and that's one good thing that they'll do, 'cause they probably do enough of them, so they can give you a suggestion on, well, this is where you should have it, so they can get in and out.
And will anybody listen?
Of course not. That's what they do now, in between. That's the way it works.
Well, if you agree with it, I would ask you to sign it now. And then, and that way, they know that you've approved it and they can go ahead and tell this fellow to go.
If we get it approved tonight, it'll be three weeks before you can get to us, 'cause he's so busy. And he's gonna do it in two stages, he's gonna do half the parking lot and we'll use the new entrance. And, uh, then he'll come back and do the other half, so we can use the old entrance.
And I see you're using the eighty-nine ninety-five from the ARPA fund. And the remainder's coming out of the public safety building cap for return.
Yes.
So, I, if you agree with that, and would like to sign it.
We, we had agreed to it when we talked about it and just needed to get it done, so I believe it's something for us to sign.
We've had different people, we've called different people, I've been there with Phil and Steve, and people just haven't called back.
You don't get anybody to call back?
It's almost like when you're buying a car, all you need is to do is sign.
Is this the appropriate time to talk about how we may or may not want to adjust how much comes out of what funds?
Um, do you mean ARPA or, or?
Like, do we still need to do that, or are we okay because of the cemetery stuff being lower than expected? 'Cause I know there was a whole juggle of where.
Well, the cemetery, the, 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 the stone repair at the cemetery, that's coming out of their capital.
So, so it is all covered by that now?
So, that's covers, yeah, so that's covered.
And the trees, we had enough or don't have enough in our funds?
The trees, um, is going to also come out of that fund.
Okay.
Um, and right now, we have enough, 'cause we're not doing them all, we're not doing the thirty thousand dollar job. We don't have enough for that.
Okay.
Um, ARPA, bear with me, 'cause my memory is short.
So, was it just because of the thirty thousand that we were talking about having to maybe?
I, I think we didn't really know what the cost was then, and so we were just using round numbers and.
Right, but was, was that the only reason that we were talking about trying to figure out, like, maybe something could come from here and.
I think so.
Call from, or, okay.
Yeah, I think so. I got too many funds.
It's a nice problem to have.
Yes, isn't it? ARPA, let's see, in the ARPA fund, um, if that's what you're asking me, there are a few projects that are not complete. Uh, the record retention project has thirty-three forty-seven left in it. The town office security for upstairs here, thirty-seven hundred. Um, the, there is unassigned for twenty-four hundred. And then we also have twenty-two hundred in interest that you, we will need to decide what to do with it. So, you've got four thousand unassigned, and hopefully those other projects will stay on budget.
Perfect. Thank you very much for the update. And I think we all signed that, and did I make it way back to Dana?
No, I gave it to him, I, I did.
Let me give it to you and then you'll give me a copy?
I suppose. Yes.
Dean, if you played that right, you should have said, you bring me the copies.
I was gonna do that.
But no, you wanted it back.
I was gonna give him the original.
Um, I'll get, I'll get you the copy.
Okay, you can just email it to me if you want.
Oh, my gosh, this is like, it's like twenty twenty-four.
You wouldn't have to print it out.
Okay, will do.
Wow, digital documents.
Nice, you move files.
Makes it easy.
Is that all you got?
That's all I got.
Okay, good.
You're up.
I am.
You're up.
So.
He's looking at you like it wasn't nice and quiet.
Well, he was busier than we were.
Doing what?
Ticks.
Oh, ticks are crazy, I had another one tonight.
They are, they're bad.
Okay, so, we're at a hundred and, we'll start.
Okay, so we're at a hundred and we'll start with the firehouse. Um, we're at a hundred and nineteen calls. Um, last month, um, trees on the wire on closed Penn Bridge Road, um, was early in the morning and, um, Steve and Phil showed up, um, a little after six, or I guess you were a little after six, Phil was a little before. And they helped us with traffic and it's six-thirty, Firearm called me and said that Ever Source would be there in forty minutes. And I looked at our chief and I said, "Hey, if you stay here and watch traffic, I can go to work." And he says, "I can do that for you." So, I struck off in three, at three, at quarter to three that afternoon, they got released.
Still there.
So, thank you very much for, um, helping us that day.
Um, just to let you know, we made money that day.
I know you did.
To the town.
Yeah.
So, we were still available for calls. We didn't have any calls. The guys down there said, "Hey, give us your details left next." This ain't a detail for us. He goes, "It is now."
Because they had no flaggers.
He went back into the town, so I thought, okay.
So, um, we have had three, um, medical calls and staged for the police. One was alcohol and, um, meth. Um, Phil was right there with us. Um, then there's another place that we don't go without the police and, um, state police, a young lady came and worked with us that day. Um, then the other night, it was eleven o'clock, we had an overdose and, uh, an unintentional overdose of an elderly folks in stage and wait for the police, but, um, there was no state police available, but Phil was on the phone and said if we needed it, he was on his way.
We were on.
Um, so, um, the other day, we got toned out for car fire, um, on Battle Street. Um, so I responded. Um, no more Crest Hill and Addy Mark called me and told me where the fire was and what it was, and it was close to a building. A huge barn, a big, big barn. Um, so I called back to Firearm and had our automatic started right away. Um, I got to the fire station and two members, attack members were there. And we jumped in the engine and we took off and backed in. The pickup was fully involved. Fourteen feet, twelve.
Twelve to fourteen feet from the barn.
From the barn.
Yeah, started to catch.
I got the bar, I got the, um, pumping water and the two people that were there helped get the hose stretched out. And Emery and Big Matt, um, attacked the fire. And the way the wind was coming down the road and hitting the pickup, it was driving right into the corner of the barn. And the barn was on fire, but, um, the person that called it in was driving by and looked up the driveway and said, "Something didn't look right." He went up to, went a pocket road, turned around, drove up in. And if that man hadn't have took in the time to do what he did, by the time Addy would have called, I think that four minutes would have, um, been quite a difference. So, that was quite a save. The property owner is, um, real thankful, um, for us, the job that we did. So, um, that was a real good save. Everybody was in the right place at the right time on that one. Um, so the medical calls, so, um, other than that, that was all the excitement at the firehouse. Um, the tanker underneath was leaking. A valve, a, a, a coupling going into a, a valve and that was a thousand dollars plus to get that fixed. Um, engine three, the air dryer, that, that's a, that's an O-four, so it's twenty years old. So, the air dryer has a right to, um, non-function, so they went to a call motorcycle accident actually the other night. Um, too much ice and not enough sand. And.
That's a good one.
Um, so that didn't function right, so I took that over to Charlie Boys, exit seven, they rebuilt that. And then the other night, engine two, the brand-new air compressor, um, AC compressor that was just put on, did a squealing and not making right. So, they, Charlie Boys is getting another one of them and replacing that because, but, um, we can still use the truck. Um, I had a young man come to the firehouse a couple of Wednesdays ago. He's full-time paramedic, um, with all his certs. Um, he came back this morning and Phil, Phil did his fingerprints and his, um, background check and driving record. Um, so that's a big plus. Um, he lives so close to the firehouse, I don't even know if he even needs a car.
No.
So, um, I'm kind of excited about that. Um, more help is always good. Um, the pump site on the Garrish Road at the old Van Long residence. They dredged the pond and they either broke the end of the, um, stand pipe off or have it so plugged up we can't use it. So, um, I have to get somebody to come in and dive that to see what's, what's going on. And, um, so the stand pipe is out of service, but we can still throw our two lengths of suction in. We're not dead in the water, but, um, that's that. Um, you talked about you got the ceiling done because Phil wanted me to remind you in case you tripped and hit your head.
Do we have other, uh, other of the pipes and dry hydrants that, uh, still need servicing?
You have the one on closed Penn Bridge Road still out of service. Last summer, the water was just too high. Hopefully that will be done. And the one behind the school, um, the way the water comes down there, the way it was designed and put in, it, it slaps and, um, so we have to use the hard suck there. So, there's two other than this one.
So, you can't use the one by my house because it's, it needs to be replaced? Is that the one?
Well, the river, the river down there and the water and the current and stuff comes down through and, um, I mean, it's only plastic. It needs to be.
Something's cracked.
Oh, it cracked. Oh, oh, oh.
It needs to be dug up. And then when I was in Pennsylvania, the last couple of years hunting, I've seen some different ideas than the way I've been doing it, so, um, I'm gonna try something different. Um, so we talked about the ceiling, um, the sign, our new sign at the safety building. Um, Unitil came and plumbed that all up today.
Today. Should have a meter in, two to three days, he said.
The meter will be in and then we're gonna get that thing fired up.
Get it fired up and running.
Correct. So, um, the grass is growing around it. Tomorrow's fun day at the school. We'll go down there at one o'clock with the fire trucks and spray the kids.
I wanna go.
Well, you can.
It's gonna be hot. It's gonna be a hot day. It's perfect.
That is awesome. Good. I'm so glad you still do that.
Yeah, that one.
One thing to remember as a kid.
That one year when fuel, the budget was bad, way back in the fuel, we didn't do that, but the kids, they, they remember that forever.
Oh, they're gonna, forever.
Yeah.
So, that's neat, good.
And I, um, invited, uh, the, the kids from the cop shop to come up and be with us.
Are you sure you really want them there?
Oh, yeah.
Because they probably won't behave.
That's fine.
Those are called problem children.
That's right.
So, um, it's gotta be a few.
There's a reason they enforce the rules.
No.
I was trying to think a nice, I was trying to think a nice way to say that. That's very nice.
No, 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 no news on the tanker. And I did talk to Jeff about the ambulance the other day and he still hasn't heard no date on his new ambulance, so he didn't have anything to tell me, um, any more than I already knew. So, now, the, the last meeting I asked the two, um, Dee and Dave and you were absent, having fun, uh, about the, the old police cruiser to make that into a.
I remember you.
A fire car. And then we talked about it for a minute. Um, did you guys have a, a moment to, um, discuss that or what, what's your thoughts?
Well, we are now together as a board so we can, so, uh.
Well, you wanted to wait, which was okay with me. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't like it was going anywhere.
So, uh, yeah.
It's not gonna drive itself away.
But, uh, we, we kinda gave a couple of thoughts, but what, what are your thoughts since apparently you've been briefed on it?
Well, no, when we were, when we're, when we're having, I thought we did talk about it.
We did a little.
Oh, yeah, a tiny bit.
And then you guys, yeah, but not, no decisions were made.
No.
Yeah.
And it's, uh, what, remind me, what, what is the, what is the price of it?
The price of it's not gonna be anything.
But what do you have to do to it? Anything?
Well, we have to relight it.
Relight it, that's what it was. Yeah, okay.
Um, the sirens is already there, the radio, it's a hundred bucks to have it programmed.
So, more or less the reason that would be, and what, and what do you think you could get, get for it on the open market?
Maybe two grand.
That's, I think that's what we're talking about.
So, what, what was the, it's, uh, twenty sixteen?
Twenty sixteen.
What's the actual mileage on it? I know it's got a lot more with idle.
You what, with idling time, three hundred and six.
Without?
Um, hundred and thirty-one, hundred and thirty-five.
I was gonna say thirty. No, I was kidding.
Just a little.
So, that's somewhat similar to what, uh, twenty twelve to twenty eighteen's were, were showing up at the auction, uh, down at the surplus that just happened recently. They were, depending on condition and mileage and stuff and, and how much equipment was left in it or not and how much of the holes were patched or not, um, they were getting anywhere from three to like eight. But of course, there's percentages and premiums and everything else on top of that, so, um, kids asked, a- anywhere from maybe like two to five would be your top possible.
The trade-in they were gonna give us, uh, he said two grand or under.
Yeah.
And the reason it would be good is because, A, it's all ready to rep in a sense, it's like change the light color.
We're gonna take the police off and put fire in the same place and leave it just, marked just the way it is.
Push bough will stay on the pile.
Stay on it. We'll probably take the cage out. You don't need the cage.
Yeah, we don't need the cage.
Oh, you don't know.
Depends who you pick out.
So, what, anything, anything else, like, um, where, where do you feel that it's, I mean, I'm assuming it's because then somebody can jump in that, they've got the sirens. So, if it's traffic or something, you have the fire, you can have that rocking and rolling. I mean, is there?
Well, my thought was, a, a new fire truck now is nine hundred thousand dollars. So, the last two snowstorms we had were brutal. Trees were down. I mean, I don't have an antenna or a light or a windshield wiper left on any plow truck. You gotta get the job done. You have to go check stuff out. So, we send the forestry instead of sending the fire truck. I mean, we only paid three hundred for one truck and three forty for the other, but to replace them and if it's fire truck red and it's a hundred dollars, it's gonna cost you a grand to fix the whatevers because of the, and to run that around and if a tree falls down or in back and forth, and then when we get the other ambulance, if somebody else shows up, instead of taking their own vehicle, they can jump in that. And if I, I mean, a lot of, a lot of nights, one night or two nights in the, in the summer months, I have meetings and sometimes they're in Northwood, eh, or, um, Washington and, I mean, nobody shows up in a one-ton truck to go to a chief's meeting. They all, in, it's just, it will be convenience. I mean, if one of the guys at the, or ladies at the firehouse have a training some night, instead of running their car, they can jump in that and go to comp and do the training and, and come back home. So, it's just kind of, uh, you know, we have a fire, somebody can run back and forth with that instead of their own own vehicle to go get water, uh, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a big, it's not a big expense. I mean, it's not like we're, I mean, to.
It's already insured anyway.
Yeah, and if something happens to it?
Yeah.
You really never out something.
If the motor blows up in, in a month, I mean, what are we, what are we gonna be out?
Yeah.
We'll just wait for the next cruiser.
Yeah. It'll be a few years for that.
Yeah, but that's fine.
But that's okay.
So, I just, I just think it would, um, I mean, we can live without it.
The thing is, we can do all the repairs ourselves just about to it.
We have for years, but I just think it would be, uh, for what we're gonna get out of it at the end of the day, I think it would be a good investment for the firehouse.
That would also be another vehicle that could take around the trailer once that's kitted out and ready.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna be vehicle enough to.
You know, but it's not weight.
Uh, uh, I don't think so. That's a category one hitch or is that a, how, how does that work? Category three. So, it needs to be, I, I'm not sure. I don't.
It depends on how much ton weight. That's what it's gonna be.
It might.
It's gonna be the weight.
Because that's extra heavy duty in the back.
And it might. It, you, it could be, but it could pull the boat. Boat would be great.
Quick, easy.
Yeah.
Hook onto the boat and take off.
Yeah, the boat would be great going with it.
So, what do you think? Well, it's not gonna cost us really anything else. We own it anyways, so, I think it's safety for safety, really.
I, I think it makes a lot of sense, especially as like a storm runner or an extra ability to bring out one of the trailers or if you need both the boat and the trailer for something, um, God forbid, uh, that, you know, you have that capability. It's not the sort of thing that I would spend money on.
Right.
Yeah.
So, if there is a problem, we should expect that there's not a replacement or a repair. But at the same time, we have it and it's not like we're getting much of anything for it, so we might as well use it until we can't.
Yeah, no, that was, that was my, that was my thought.
I think you're gonna, you're gonna save money in the long run.
If it poaches out, and if it poaches out, a lot of ti- I mean, it's not like somebody's holding a gun to somebody's head to get there. I mean, you're already, it's not gonna be the first.
New vehicle.
Vehicle.
So, my two questions for Dana. One, do we need a motion or is consensus good? And the second one is, since, at least in the past, the police cruiser purchases by warrant article have included and what we get for trade-in, are we required to trade it in? Was that language in the last one?
I don't believe it was, no.
It wasn't.
No.
Okay.
Um, and your first question as far as the motion, I would suggest a motion. Um, that way it's, there's no question about it. I would just ask when this happens, please let me know so I can change the category, the insurance.
Yep, we'll let you know ahead of time.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comment or?
Nope.
All right, I would move that we accept the suggestion to use the old police cruiser as a, uh, additional fire auxiliary vehicle.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the trees at.
Cemetery?
Cemetery on Tyler Road will be taken down June tenth. Um, and if we have a police cruiser available for a little bit, if we're gonna block off one lane with the crane.
Yep.
Um, at Riverdale Cemetery.
On Monday.
Yep, one week from now.
So, that's my. So that's my fire stuff. I didn't forget anything, cause I wrote it down.
All right.
So we'll go to the roads. Um, we really haven't done a whole lot other than keeping an eye on things, and they all look good, don't you think?
They do.
We've been working on Little Hill, um, we've ditched that all out from mighty vendors, from the, from all the way to where we start maintaining the road, up one side and back the other, and now we, um, have started changing the pipes.
I notice you've got a pile of them across the street.
That I do. And they don't give them away anymore. Yes, so scroll to the right, and you'll see what shape the culverts are in on Little Hill.
Oh, wow.
Oh, jeez, oh, nice, look like a snake.
Larry, well, we cro- we made that, but the bottoms.
That looks about as good as the ones that were in White Plains.
So Larry, Larry Prevee and Dick Drowns put them in probably twenty-three years ago when Adam Hawk was a road agent.
Oh.
So that's, that's the history there with that. So, um, last Friday, um, Bruce Davis from Allstate Asphalt met me, and we went out and about and checked out all the roads that were candidates for the chip sealing this year, um, which will be Corn Hill, um, Summer Deer Meadow, Conquer Drive, and Penny Cook Circle, um, so, um, so that will bring us up to date, everything that we have ready that's a good candidate for this year. So that, we spent a hundred thousand with them last year, so that will be pretty close to the same amount for that. Um, we have, talked to them folks at MB Tractor, and in September, the middle of September, we are getting two roadside mowers from them to do our roadside mowing, the over-the-rail mowers, so we usually do that, takes two weeks, but I'm getting two tractors.
Some of the corners are starting to grow enough that it's not easy to see around.
No, no, and, um, and then the tractor I have, so we'll mow with three tractors for one week instead of two tractors for, for two weeks, cause it usually eighty hours to mow the town with two tractors. So, um, the speed limit signs on Lake Road that were requested last fall, I didn't get the post in because of the weather. I do have the post in, but before I put the signs up, I wanted to make sure that we had the backing, so if the police dropped somebody to give them a ticket, that it was all in place, but did we find anything?
Nope.
And we haven't found anything for any of the twenty-five mile an hour on Bashan Hollow and Garrish and Nothrew Truckin', or any of the Keeper of the Records, nobody knows where.
Or when.
But I know all that stuff was done.
It's somewhere in downtown, we just need to locate it.
So, um.
What is the process if we wanted to re-adopt all of the ones that we remember?
I can tell you what the process is.
Is that a town meeting or is that like public hearings and go do it?
You gotta do.
No, you'd get a, you, you got a road study committee, we always did, I don't, we haven't done it for a long time, which involves the police chief, fire chief, the road agent, and a town citizen. I don't believe it, was there a select board now? No.
I don't think there was last time, no.
Um, and then they recommend to the board their thoughts, um, I guess, on background on motor vehicle accidents in the area and, um, the history of the road. And then it has to go to a public hearing?
Yep, they open it for a public hearing if somebody wants to voice their opinion on it.
And then after that, it gets voted on and stamped by the select board, am I right?
Yep, by the select board.
Okay.
But, don't know that they should be, Phil didn't think that there was one, and that's why I looked into it before I, I hung the sign, so.
We can do all those at once.
Yeah.
Well.
Could be safer.
The ones that exist should be somewhere.
Yeah.
And the minutes will, we have the minutes, it's just a matter of finding the dates to pull the minutes out. So it exists, it's just a matter of figuring out where it is.
Okay, so if anybody asks, that's why the speed limit signs on, uh, cause I need to have the.
Yeah, we're waiting to have the bad, the tough find.
Okay, so, um, because I was asked and I did say that I would do it.
If we don't find them in a reasonable time?
I've already spent like three or four days looking, so, and I've been told they're in the town clerk's office and Mary hasn't been able to locate them yet.
I would say if you would just go forward.
Yeah, if you don't find them in a very reasonable time, set up like these are all of the things and let's, let's go do it.
It's like Centennial Drive, that, that is no true traffic, that needs to go away.
Centennial Drive?
Yeah. No, Centennial Drive doesn't need to go away.
I was just testing you, yeah.
There's a lot of things that we could update and, um, make clean. I mean, that's my opinion, I mean, you guys are the final.
It won't hurt anything to reaffirm anything.
No.
Yeah.
I would suggest that if we're reaffirming what we know is, what we expect is already true, and that we just haven't found stuff, that we could do a, a short, like, let's go through this, do the, do the announcement, do the public hearing and prove it. But if we're gonna actually change things, clean things up, then we probably wanna do the full process. Just to make sure that everything is as kosher as possible and no one can really.
You wanna have a work session, um, we'll get together with the committee, who are we gonna appoint for the town?
So I'll, I'll leave that implementation detail to working with them, so you can set that up if it needs to be done or not. Hopefully we'll just happen to find the, like, it'll show up.
Yeah, that would be great, but.
But if not, um, they'll work that out so that we can get that.
Do we wanna set a date? Do we wanna make this happen? Are we gonna canasterade it on it all some along?
I think we need to get a, a recommendation before we do it, so.
I think that's part of the, the procedure, yeah.
For what?
So you, so you can work with Dana to.
The committee would need to somehow form and then make a recommendation, so why don't we talk about it?
Do we need to appoint any of that or is that just formed?
I think that's just formed.
We can come up to it, please, and get it back.
Yes, okay, no, no, just so we can get stuff done and another check.
And if, uh, if it is a select board member is supposed to go, please let us know, we can, I'm sure one of us can.
I'm not, I don't think it was.
Two cents on the road.
If you wanna.
It doesn't, it doesn't sound like it's needed, but, um, if it is.
Well, no, it doesn't.
Actually, it makes sense not to be, cause we'll hear about it.
I think so, I think that's probably better.
Thanks for fixing the hole on Closepin Bridge Road.
Oh, on the bridge?
Not the bridge, the little.
Well, that too.
Oh.
Well, that too, yeah, but the, the hole was getting bad in the road, so, appreciate that.
I guess, I don't know.
You don't know?
I walk in my sleep, so I might as well have the doc. Yeah, no, it's all good, we, um, it's all good.
Dave, before the department heads leave, I've got two things that I'd like you to do while they're here.
Okay.
And one of them is appointing the Hazard Mitigation Committee. And hopefully the people on it know they're going to be, and that's the, will, it's coordinated by the Regional Planning Commission. When she gets that, she will be scheduling, start scheduling what we need to do.
So all of these look like I would expect them to be because of their positions, of course, there's two citizens, have you reached out to them already?
Yes.
Okay.
Everyone on there I've talked to.
Okay.
Now, these meetings, are they gonna be during the day or after five o'clock or?
That's an excellent question, Emmett, I'm not sure what the answer is yet.
Okay, no, I would just.
I'll have an answer for you, yeah.
So you can see the list, uh, most of this is by position, so, um, I don't see any particular questions to, to ask, so.
I think you know most of the people there.
Yes, uh, are we ready for motion for creating our Hazard Mitigation Committee?
Sure.
All right. I would move that we appoint as the Hazard Mitigation Committee, Robert Walensky as the Emergency Management Director, Emmett Bean as the Highway and Fire Department, Phil Mitchell as the Police Department, Dana Hadley representing Administration, Eric Hanson representing Mayor Mack Valley School District, John Clark and John Sealy as Webster citizen stakeholders.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You got off on that one pretty cheap, didn't you?
No, I'll be filling in when Phil's not there.
Okay.
I'm afraid of Steve, so I didn't wanna. Um, the other thing that I wanted to just bring you up to date, a few comments on the Closepin Bridge project.
Yes.
Well, I'm so glad you mentioned that.
Well, I thought you might be interested. As I've mentioned, I think a few times, we're waiting to finish securing all the easements that we need. We've got two permanent easements that we need, we have purchased two right-of-ways, one construction easement, and this involves two owners on the south side of the bridge. One of the owners I spoke with today, because they said they could not get ahold of her, and I called, she answered on the second ring, and I said, um, hello.
You said hello?
So she said, fine, she was, and I think that they've mainly worked out the deal, the issues with her. Uh, the other owner's very concerned about the safety of the egress from their driveway, and the engineers have been working closely with that property owner, trying to think of ways to address the situation, and there's no easy way to address the situation. The new bridge has been designed to soften the turn at the northeast side of the bridge, and while it's a better situation overall, it gives less sight distance to that owner's driveway. Some ideas that have, the other issue is, there's going to be a sidewalk on the bridge, although they're calling it a platform, and which makes the.
It's hanging over, it's hanging over the side of the bridge, right? Isn't that it?
No, it's sitting on the side.
It's sitting on the side, so people can stand on it.
Oh, okay, cause I thought we were doing like a walkway on the other side of the bridge.
Who's gonna shovel it?
It is a walkway.
I'll go down, Emmett.
Okay. The reason that it's a platform is so that we don't have to do intermediates.
Oh, okay.
Because it's, it's not a.
So it won't be raised up?
It will be higher than the road?
It will be higher than the road, uh, one of the issues they pointed out to me is because of it, the guardrails on the bridge have to be higher.
Right.
So, in other words, you won't be able to look across the bridge and see this driveway in question. Um, the engineers have, and of course, we're working with DOT and R Engineering, and it's a, it's a process. Um, one of the, the engine, one of the suggestions was a speed sign at the bridge. Um, I spoke with one member of the board and who was not in favor of that, um, and I'm not particularly in favor of that, it's one of those speed signs.
Oh, ugly things.
And, you know, uh, another option is lowering the speed limit, and is the speed limit on Closepin Road?
Thirty-five.
Uh, so lowering the speed limit, would that help? Also suggested, and this came from the DOT, only it didn't come from the Traffic Division, was putting a stop sign at the end of the bridge.
So they're stopping on the bridge?
Which kind of is, I think, a little quirky, um, I, you know, I think they're trying to think of ways to slow the traffic down.
They can just put Steve down there at the end.
They can change the speed for the bridge itself, you guys can do that, like, put a, you know, thirty mile an hour.
Kinda like around the corner.
Yep.
But it, it's thirty-five now, it's a one-lane bridge, and I mean, you do have some accidents on that backside because of the slippery conditions where they come around, but, um, it's gonna be a two-lane bridge. Now, I, and, I mean, it's, it's been.
You're gonna go faster.
I think they're really trying to work ways to maybe help this property.
From a random outside perspective. To not inconvenience everybody that the bridge is supposed to make this better for. The least inconvenient ways to do that are the common things that you see, one of which we've already done, which is to put mirror up, so that at least they can see what's coming and when it's safe for them to go in and out. The second that would make sense to me would be to, uh, add signage for hidden driveway, that's a fairly common sign that you see, and that would make perfect sense to me in this sort of situation, and would not be a lot of upkeep for us, like, say, a radar sign would be, um, we wouldn't have to run power to it, we wouldn't have to keep it running, et cetera. Uh, and the last one that would make sense to me would be the speed limit, and if we adjusted the speed limit, it would have the secondary benefit of, since we would be setting the speed limit, we get to keep the fines.
Do it right on the, I'd do it just before the bridge to just after the bridge.
Well, kinda like when you say hidden driveway speed limit.
Thirty.
Yeah.
Or you could, twenty-five.
Okay, I was gonna say twenty-five maybe.
I guess we could put a covered bridge in it.
They had spoken about.
That's what I would like.
We asked.
That's what I would like, that would be great.
Right, you wouldn't have to.
Only if you get DOT to pay for it.
Pay for it, that would be great, if I win a mega bucks, I'd do it.
They did mention as your idea of a blind driveway sign, or something, something like that.
Reduce speed ahead.
Um, is, is that something that we can keep out of the project and pay for ourselves so we don't have to go through this process? I mean, well, hang these. Well, they would have to approve it of the traffic, if it's part of the, if it's part of the, um, project.
Chief said it was really easy.
Well, the, yeah, the speed limit's great, but anything changes, we don't have say on that because of the financing.
Yep.
And I'm not saying they're unreasonable, cause that, they're.
But I think what you're saying, get the bridge up.
But I'm just saying, is it something we could just do rather than go through a lot?
Right, we get, we get our committee in, right.
Standards signs we have finance for.
I mean, I don't think we're talking a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah.
No.
It's not like the radar signs and stuff, so, yeah, the, we can find money to do that if that's the appropriate way for us to do it.
Yeah, and we'll just get our committee together and, um, do a recommendation that what we should do, and then, um, and do it up.
Yep.
So I'm concerned because I'm hoping we can get this resolved sooner rather than later, cause we were supposed to have already gone out to the construction bid by now.
Yeah.
Yeah, the middle of May.
And so obviously, the more it takes, um, the longer it's gonna take to replace the bridge.
We can make that suggestion to the homeowners of the property, but are they gonna accept that?
Well, and the, the engineer, I think, has really put a full effort into trying to do what he can to make this work. No matter what, it's not a great situation.
Fire car, no, the last car.
What's their knock, it's an ambulance? Austin, American Home Service, emergency white lane.
Austin.
Room one, make a line.
So I just wanted you to know where we were, um, and, and I appreciate the fact that we can do this.
What becomes the process for that, like, is it us saying that, like, yeah, you can consider that, and then they make an agreement? Like, is it us saying that, like, yeah, you can consider that, and then they make an agreement? Because especially if that's not part of the state portion, how is that really agreed to in the?
The only thing that isn't part of the state process right now is that blind driveway sign. And I don't think the state minds if you put a blind driveway sign.
Okay.
Yeah. But if you were asking them, even though we're trying, that's why I'm asking you because the money part of it is insignificant compared to the, you know, the, what they have to do. And they have, you know, they're dealing with the federal government. You know, it's, it's wonderful we have this, this bridge being paid for.
Oh, yeah.
But.
Yeah, and thank you, Dana. You put a lot of time in this.
And I like that, I mean, and unfortunately, the longer they take for this bridge, the longer I'm going to be here, so. Unless I don't like Russ, and I can throw it at him, but anyway, it's I'm, I'm just, I'm kind of after the engineer all the time, what's going on, what's happening. And I'm just hoping we don't get to a step I don't want to have to do. Because, again, that takes a long time.
Well, you recommend the sign, recommend the sign and say, pretty much, that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
And then, you know.
And we'll take care of it.
Yeah, because.
And Steve will hang out down there a little.
The sign in this?
I'll sit there in a driveway, people from coming out.
So I'm hearing you say that the stop sign at the end of the bridge is not a very good option.
No, because I want to get rid of them other two stop signs down at Roy Fanjoys. They need to go.
Well, you know, it's interesting because one of those stop signs, if you're coming toward town, there's a stop sign. And when I first drove that road.
You can't see any of the corners.
And I'm like, why am I stopping? I can't see anything, and I don't dare not stop.
You got to pull ahead.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
I came out of Lowe's the other day, and it was a stop sign, it was a skew. And I went through it, my wife says, oh, it doesn't fly to you.
Can have one.
Put some fifteen mile an hour speed limit down and some curb signs, and, I mean, I.
I did, but it, but it really what it boils down to is where they make you stop. There's nobody that doesn't stop at that thing and look at everybody going.
You can't see, so they don't stop there, they pull up twenty feet.
So if you really wanted to, that'd be the, this is God's law, you could give everybody tickets.
That's right.
And that is the road, not the side road, and the side road has a stop sign already, so.
Yeah.
Please.
It's weird.
Well, they did that way back when they did the construction out here on Battle Street, back when we were kids. Because Old Route 127 used to go up through Josh Taylor's and then down in front of the tax collectors, down in front of Karen King's. And the construction company started back in Wilby Hollow, and maybe even before that, and went down through in the corner where the campground is. That corner wasn't there, the road went straight onto Tyler Road and then came around on the other side of where Reuben and Wendy lived. And went around, so they changed all that. And they hauled a lot of the material out of that pit. And they put all them stop signs up, and them signs watch for trucks, trucks turning and entering, all back then. And somebody thought it was a good idea that lives in the area that, hey, and they've been there ever since. And I don't even know if they were ever adopted by the town. I don't know if you could have even find that in the history.
Well, we haven't had a great success.
Yeah, nor do we want to waste your time doing that, right?
So, anyways. Yeah, so if there's going to be a committee, let's just get all of the recommendations at once.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
And then we'll have one meeting and have a good hoo-ha and.
Yep, I like a good hoo-ha, yep.
And then we can get all those recommendations at once and.
I think that's the way to do it, yeah.
That's the best way.
Yeah. Great.
Still need to find out.
Anything else, Sam?
Well, this is true, but.
I mean, it doesn't help all the other things that we've got on.
Let's see, Dara, Carter, Eric, Michelle, and Ben, we're in good hands.
Yep.
Got a good crew going, so that is awesome.
You done?
I.
I'm just asking.
I'm good.
Emmett, will you be doing any calcium, calcium, calcium? Why can't I?
Calcium chloride.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, I got the truck all together and got the sander body off, finally cleaned up. And then we bought a new motor and a new pump for that because the calcium just chews to last on our two years. Russell's got that all fixed up. I have a thousand gallons of calcium chloride there from, from last year, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I hadn't done it yet this spring because of all the rain and, but I did notice yesterday and today that it was starting to get dusty. It's starting to get dusty, but.
Perfect.
Awesome.
Good. All right. Thank you.
All right, you, you going to make it home, all right?
I'll make it home.
Need help?
Nope. I'll make it home and I'll be back here in.
Four hours?
Well, seven hours, seven and a half hours.
So that holds us on the whole business.
So if you're good with us?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh wait, we do have some, don't we?
Enjoy the night.
What do we have? Maybe we don't have any.
Yeah.
All right.
It's kind of funny.
And that moves us on to new business.
We're catching up on it right now.
And you go by in the morning, look on the other side of the road, Nate brought up six cows and six calves and a bull. So, our cows are going crazy back and forth, they'll moo all night long. So if you get a complaint on, no one's on the hill, it's not me.
So this is her building permit that was approved about a month ago for the Steels. You may be familiar with the driveway if you were on the planning board. I think you are familiar with Steel driveway.
I think I remember it, yeah.
Yep, that was a big hall of balloons. But that driveway's been finally approved, it's all finished, they filed for their building permit, the building permit's been approved, and they want to live on the property while they build. So it's a pretty standard affair, they're just looking for a temporary occupancy permit for the duration of the building permit.
And how, so we don't normally grant them for, I think, building permits that are good for two years? Two years? Yes, we don't normally grant them for that long. Done that in the past, have we?
I might have somebody that we granted one to.
I thought we granted them like the, instead of the ninety days, we granted like a hundred and eighty so that they had a chance to get their building permits before we did more.
Well, let's see, we just granted somebody, didn't we just grant somebody the, the two years?
We've done it before, but usually with the people that don't have it, you grant it for a shorter period of time.
Because they're trying to get their building permits.
Because they didn't have it.
Okay.
This person has it.
Okay.
But that's what they're asking for, two years?
They're asking for the duration of the permit, so the permit expires, the temporary occupancy expires. Because generally, they should be done by.
Right.
Or well before that.
Does the temporary occupancy automatically expire when they're done and getting the normal occupancy permit? Or is there like weird overlap where there's technically two occupant resident, approved occupant residents?
I mean, I'm going to the legal minutia of it, I would say, yes, there probably is some overlap there unless you were to end it.
Can't we just grant them the two years and then at the end of the occupancy, two year? Say, oh, done building and getting the occupancy. Did I say this right? Then they need to come back and see us.
At that point, it would be code enforcement if they're trying to retain two occupant locations. So, yeah, that's fine.
I always say, because two years does not take, two years does buy it for fast. Yeah, the older you get, two years. Well, number one, and then everything takes to be taking longer.
I, uh, do we, I, I would move that we approve a temporary occupancy permit for the duration of the.
It's until December first, twenty twenty-four.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Anything further there, or the abatements?
I think the abatement's next. One is an abatement, which I included in your packet. This is for sixty BlackBerry Lane, and the assessor has made her recommendation not to grant an abatement on that. And she stated her reasons why. And if you were to agree, if I could get your signatures on that.
Can I assign in purple ink? Does that matter, or should I have it in black?
Here, I'll give you a black, yeah, I love purple, but.
Okay, I can think about that.
But I, but I'm, you know, I'm kind of a traditional type of person.
All righty, Steve, come on.
Well.
That must be someone on the new speed limit.
Need no rest for the wicked.
Might be in busy.
I swear, this, this job has made my signature worse.
My God, come on, Dave.
I'm not quite sure how that could be possible, but.
That looks like a lower line. You're taking up more space.
I have an abatement, this was one that you had signed prior for campground, and Karen King adjusted some of the scents on it that were off, so it's really trying to correct the form.
Scent on?
Under the scents on.
So now it makes sense?
So now it should make sense.
Okay.
And I've got some more campgrounds.
And then Russ has more campgrounds.
These were campgrounds that were switched to, due to the way when we printed the warrant and we called them to get it ready, they said they hadn't finished the campground yet, they told us ahead of time. So there would be some campers that hadn't been zeroed out yet. So I said, okay, we wanted to get the bills out on time, but we could do an abatement after, and that's what that's for.
So we do pretty well with campground money, don't we?
Well, that's money we're really giving back in taxes.
Yeah.
There's reasons, I mean, they may.
No, but we're not the only town that goes through it.
No, we're not.
Yeah, no, that's true. Somebody said that to me, I spend more time finding them places.
Yeah, this is the only time that I wish we were able to. You want me to put that?
I don't have a fancy folder like you do.
Well, I'm, you know.
I have a fancy computer.
Any further abatements?
Uh, that's it for the abatements.
Should we talk about the agreement as an abatement? Or is that, I mean, or do you want to save it for correspondence, which is next?
I can, I can talk about it next.
Sure.
This is the public service agreement, which you had agreed to.
Right.
And I didn't see anything in that that, I guess I got it in the signature pile here, that was different, and they just need you to sign it so we can send it to our lawyer, and he will have Public Service sign it. And as soon as I get this back with their signature, I have a check in the vault that I can send them.
And I assume our, maybe incorrectly, but hopefully correctly, that our legal representation for this is already within the agreement in full.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So.
Looked pretty boilerplate, but.
It, it is pretty boilerplate, I could read it to you.
That's fine, I got my pillow, I'm ready for now.
So here are the, here are the way the board would sign.
Yep, at the bottom, okay.
I'll print your names in there.
You're going to print my name at the bottom or the top, yeah?
It spoils you guys, you print your names, you write states in for you. I know, you gotta.
So does my assistant. She doesn't trust me.
You have to invest in people.
I want to be as high-tech as you.
Okay, that's probably, okay. So I guess, yeah.
Man, you're lucky they never had me in the DMV line, I would call and rap all day long, that's not your handwriting, that's not your signature, that's not.
Well, if I saw you in the DMV line, I would move.
That's what I'm thinking.
I went and got my license renewed during COVID, and I had a line on the thing, and I walked up and just.
Step back, step back.
I love it the one time where somebody's like, oh, they didn't sign here, so you have to go get that signed. And then they went outside, put it on their pickup truck, right in front of the window, and then signed it.
I realize they were very hard, but that meeting really wasn't very nice.
Turn around, look. No, I'm not taking that, sorry, bye.
Also, in correspondence, we received today a notice from the town of Salisbury about a cell tower at two oh three Raccoon Hill Road. So if you had any sort of comments on that, you could do that, comment.
What are we going to do, say, no, we can't, they can't do it? I don't think they listen to us.
CBA and Planning Board holding a joint public hearing on Monday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty at the Salisbury Academy Hall, nine Old Coach Road, Salisbury, to consider that application. So if someone wants to go make a comment on that, conditional use permit and application for site plan review, and to do a cell tower at two oh three Raccoon Hill Road in Salisbury. I think an announcement is probably the most important thing ever.
Okay.
I guess, just for the sake of it, for the two RZBA and the Planning Board, so they definitely know about it as well.
Okay.
But I don't think there's anything we need to do about it.
Do you want to talk to them about that?
So is this Tom Bayes report?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is for the shed on Deer Meadow Road, the owner has moved it as of yesterday.
Awesome.
So that has been moved.
Great.
Perfect.
Problem solved.
That is all we had for correspondence.
Do we have a rough number of how many code enforcement inspection things are in progress at this point?
All right, oh, three.
Three.
Well, two now, if that one's solved.
All right.
One down, two to go, Dave.
We have meeting minutes, and I forgot to tell Russ that I had the non-publics for the sixteenth, which I snuck into your packets. Which I'm sure you must have noticed.
Will sneak.
Yeah.
Wants to get business over with.
Let's see, oh, yes, non-publics. Oh, right, that one. Didn't, I thought we already did that.
I thought we did too.
Did we?
I don't know.
I thought we approved it, but we can approve it again. Never heard of it.
I thought we unsealed them, I don't know if we ever approved them. We might have unsealed them before.
Here we go.
You unsealed the previous ones.
Here we go, let's make a motion to approve the non-public on May sixteenth. All in favor?
Second. All in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Will these seal?
Sorry, you needed the second first.
I don't remember.
Yeah.
Should.
I don't think so. I don't remember typing a motion to seal.
I don't either, but.
I don't remember hearing the motion either.
If, if we, uh, no, I think we, we did because this contains the amounts.
I, I think you did, I think you did too, so I should really add that at the bottom because this was not at a regular meeting, this was.
Yeah.
So I guess.
So I would also move that we unseal the non-public minutes from May sixteenth.
Oh, that solves my problem.
Second.
All in favor?
Then we're going to have to amend the meeting minutes from the.
What, from here?
Okay, let's do it.
Okay.
Well, never mind.
No, I think you're okay.
You think we're?
Yes, I think you're fine.
I guess our joint.
We did have to really strangle up with these minutes.
I don't know, I, I've lost track of reality.
Not too much.
Oh, yeah, it was the sixteenth, I wasn't at that one.
You weren't at that one, that, that was the one that was held downstairs.
Incognito.
So it must have been okay enough.
That's the one we got rid of real quick.
Yeah.
Because you weren't here.
That's why it wasn't done correctly, Russ.
That's why I won't remember what the motion is.
All right, any comments, questions, corrections to the May twentieth minutes?
Nope, no.
Want to make a motion?
Okay, I make a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting Monday, May twentieth of the select board. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was our joint meeting in Hockington.
All right, so I have some, one thing I have for you to sign is I did a special check for Brenda, for the man that's going to fix the cemetery stones. He needs to deposit the start work, so I've got a eighteen hundred dollar check that. so I've got a eighteen hundred dollar check then.
Seems good I brought two.
Well, I wish I had some car, I mean, I feel like, I'm over here. You know, you know when you're tired and you gotta keep moving?
Marla, this was from the last time that you hadn't had a chance to look at it yet.
Okay, thank you.
And, oh, all right. Um, do you wanna talk about your intent?
Give me one second.
What is your intent, please?
Oh, it's just a, um, standard intent to cut. This is for our people that file for the lot every single year. They just didn't have the opportunity to really cut what they wanted to last year, so they're gonna try to do it this year.
So what is that?
Perhaps a dumb question, can we make a motion to just appoint you to sign these, so we don't have to.
It's a little bit more complicated than that, Dave.
Okay.
So much for that.
A little bit more complicated than that. This is estate law.
It was worth asking.
That's right. No, you know what's funny, Russ, is like, in the City of Concord, it's just one person.
I think there is a way to do it. I would have, there is a way to do it.
I used to do it in another life.
But, but, well, yeah.
I would have to double-check the process, but.
Probably she just.
Why don't you do that, and then maybe they can, cause it would just.
After this? Are we going into non-public?
We are not, maybe just in case, but, you know.
No, that's why I was wanting to sign this, huh?
Unless you insist.
Actually. I don't know if we can sign it. The taxes aren't paid, but I'll look for the.
Since we're not going to non-public, I don't know if, I just wanna know who that was. Or they don't say it, just write it, I think, maybe.
I think you know.
That's what I'm figuring.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe.
Yeah.
See, in this case.
Actually, I think I have to take that back, the tax.
Is it the latest tax bill? You just say.
Previous one.
That's right.
Oh, really?
Oh, okay.
Well, why don't we just take it, and then you can tell them he has to pay the taxes?
Yeah, I'm gonna tell him he has to pay the taxes. Unfortunately, I thought if it was just the current one, I wasn't gonna say anything, but if the previous one, it's not.
Cause those aren't due yet, but if it's the previous one, you can't do it.
I can't do it. Okay. So I'm not gonna give it over.
So you want me to put it in my little folder, and I'll give it to you tomorrow?
Hold it, but when he pays the taxes, I'll give it to him.
Okay. Is there anything further?
I have nothing else. I'd be glad to know.
I was checking that really quick. It's never been a problem the last three years, is that?
Thank you.
Anything further from the board?
No.